To go into closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed session. Is there a motion to certify the closed session?
So.
A second? May I have a roll call vote, Ms. Parker?
Yes.
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 Thank you. At the opening of the 12:30 meeting and before the board entered into closed session, the board voted unanimously to permit Supervisor Clinton to attend the meeting remotely. We will repeat that process again at this time. Supervisor Clinton provided notification that due to a medical condition, he is in Minneapolis today and unable to attend this meeting in person. Consistent with state law and the board's bylaws, I move that the board approve Mr. Clinton's participation in today's meeting through electronic communication. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion unanimously carries and Mr. Clinton may participate in this meeting electronically. Thank you, Ms. Bradbury, for making that happen. We will now begin our business as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Michael, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Enjoyed that.
It was absolutely wonderful to hear those young voices reciting that pledge with us. Thank you so much. We would now, we're now led to collectively and collaboratively participate in a moment of silence. I ask that you take this time to reflect upon the many blessings that we've been given and the many challenges that we face and how to face those appropriately. Please take a moment of silence to consider those and other items that are on your heart. Thank you. We will now begin our agenda items. Volunteerism in service is vital to this community and I think reflective of who we are as a community. So it is my pleasure to ask Chief Ferguson to come down and to recognize Virginia Fire Office Academy and years of service to our fire and EMS team. So Chief Ferguson, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. With me first this afternoon is Lieutenant Matt Scott. We wanted to take a moment to acknowledge him for recent completion of the Virginia Fire Officers Academy. This is a program that we've been acknowledging folks for, for the past several years. It's a resident program offered in two different means. One is a full week at the University of Richmond and the other is a hybrid model, which is what Lieutenant Scott was able to participate in, spending two weeks away from home in Abingdon, Virginia. The hybrid model allows for more combination of volunteer and career personnel to attend together, whereas the resident model obviously takes a full week away from life and work to be there and learn about leadership. Their motto is leadership through safety. And I promise you, this is something that carries on for years. They actually just, what was it, the 15th year that they celebrated? And speaking as one of the first graduates of the program when it started, I can promise you it lent itself to my abilities to work through some of the challenges of working with, with personnel and managing conflict and things like that. So we always encourage our folks to apply. This is a very competitive program. There's usually over 100 applications for about 20 seats per academy. So we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge Lieutenant Scott and congratulate him on his achievement in that category.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations.
All right. The next acknowledgement. Again, Rock Brothers, Rock Family, volunteers and staffs, feel free to join us down front. And we'll get started. Your mom.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming down.
All right. This, this years of service acknowledgement, it's my honor each time that we do this to find folks within our ranks that have been serving the community for decades that really meet the mold of lifetime achievement in their service to the community. And in thinking about who best to recognize this year for lifetime achievements, it became abundantly clear that there were two, and those two are brothers. And that obviously is Michael Rock and Gary Rock. And collectively, these two have over 90 years of volunteer service in the community. So just to share a little bit of background, because I asked them before the board if there was any, before the board meeting, if there was anything they'd like me to expand upon, because I had Lieutenant Rock do some reconnaissance for me before they were invited today. And both of them wanted to draw attention to really where they got their start, and that was their father, Richard Rock, who unfortunately passed away earlier this year. So their father was a member of Troutville Volunteer Fire Department in 1956 and spent decades there and helped in 1965 form the Troutville Volunteer Rescue Squad. Both of them really pointed to him as what, as I'm quoting, lit the fire in them to become members and community servants within their communities. Mike started his volunteer experience in the fall of 1971 with Troutville. And then after settling down in Blue Ridge and taking a couple of years off, started volunteering with Blue Ridge Fire Department in 1986. He still currently actively serves there today as lieutenant on the operations side, as well as the president of the incorporation. So he has over 50 years of active service within the community. And then Gary started in Troutville in December of 1974. He also spent time in service jointly at the Reed Mountain Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department where he served a period as chief. And then after taking a little bit of a break, he came back to an active status from being a life member of Troutville in 2004. And Gary currently serves there as deputy chief. So we felt it very much the right thing to do to jointly award them their lifetime achievement axes. Of course, Mike's son, Darren, serves with us as a career lieutenant, but got his start as a volunteer in Blue Ridge and Montvale when he was 16 years of age. And so multiple generations of familiar service to the community. So without further ado.
Mike, for over 50 years of service.
About 15 minutes to prepare, so I asked them if they would like to say anything.
Not much on public speaking.
I'd just like to encourage the community to, for the younger generations to come along and pick up the volunteerism where is needed in the community. It may not always be fire or rescue, but there are so many activities in the community that need volunteers. And volunteerism struggles in this day and age for so many things that take other time. And it just, the community members, particularly the younger 20, 30, 40s, really need to try and take up some volunteer time.
Well said. I do want to point out too, I think it's super special and this is close to my heart, but they are here with their mother, Shirley. Congratulations. That is just beautiful. I think when you have kids, you probably never dream that you're going to be celebrating decades and decades of community service with them. But what a, what a benefit and a blessing to this community that you all are. And Darren, it's great to see generationally this being passed. So I thank you all so much. Others?
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for initiating those individuals to come out and start volunteering. I think that is important.
I've only known you two for a very short period of time, but I'm very pleased to have made your acquaintance and I thank you for your service. I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Same here. Really proud of you. And we do certainly appreciate your service. No doubt about it.
And this doesn't mean you can stop. Keep, keep recruiting if nothing else, Mike. That's, that's fantastic.
Too young, yeah.
Wonderful.
Actually use those.
That can't come in the, in the home, right, Marta? Well, congratulations and thank you to the support. It's great to see this much support for you all here too today. So thank you, Chief Ferguson. Lots of pictures, Tiffany. So we will move on now to Agenda Item Five. This is our citizen comment period. This is for citizen comments that are specific to Agenda Items. Ms. Parker, do I have anyone? Anyone in the audience like to speak to an Agenda Item? Okay, we will hold these two until the end of our meeting. And we will move on to our consent agenda. If everyone has had time to take a look at that, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Would like to now bring down Ms. Davis. If you could come for Agenda Items Seven and Eight.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the month of May, there are no transfer requests. We did have eight pass-through appropriations, which is appropriation of discrete funds that we received. The first is to appropriate funds to the jail related to medical reimbursements and contract payments. The second item is to appropriate funds to dispatch for contract payments and VDOT training grant. The next is to appropriate funds to the sheriff's office related to miscellaneous reimbursements, fees, donations, overtime for security and contract payments. Additionally, there are three appropriations to Fire EMS for reimbursements and grant funds received and two additional donations for Fire EMS to support the girls' fire camp. There are no regular appropriations for the month. It's requested that these transfers and appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions I can answer?
Anyone have questions for Ms. Davis?
If not, move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. If we could now move on to Item Eight, Approval of Accounts Payable and Ratification of the Short Accounts Payable List.
Okay, for the month of May, the total expenditures being requested for approval is $1,447,471.83. This includes notable distributions of the month of $72,000 paid to Striker for stretchers for Fire EMS and $36,000 paid to Architectural Partners related to the Reed Mountain Expansion and 911 Center project. Are there any questions on accounts payable that I can answer?
Any questions? Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our accounts payable. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Item number nine is our VDOT monthly update. Mr. Blevins, if you would come on down, please. We'll go ahead and have your report first and then hold on and at 2:30, we'll open a public hearing.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again today. As for our normal monthly update, we've started some resurfacing, or at least our contractors started some resurfacing around, around our area. No traffic engineering work orders to speak of for, for this month. They're still underway or pending. As far as site plan reviews, we have several under review, under review at the moment. Be happy to provide any information for those that, that I may have. As far as permits issued, we've issued quite a bit this month. You know, several utility, we issued a bunch of crest stage monitors at some of the bridges that's requested through a sister agency to monitor the flood levels of some of the streams, private entrances, temporary construction entrances, residential street tie-ins, those types of things. As far as our residency or VDOT projects, the International Parkway project here at 220 is nearly complete. I think it's technically still open. They may have a few minor things left to do, but they should be nearly done. As far as the Hunter's Green Full Death Reclamation Project on the secondary six-year plan that we also talk about again later, it's still scheduled sometime this summer. It should start in, in sometime in June, maybe early July, but they definitely want to get it done before school starts. As far as maintenance work around the county, we've been mowing our primary routes and then we'll move the secondaries. We're doing that on all, all of our areas. We are self-performing our mowing this year rather than having contractors do the primaries. Doing dust control, you know, still cleaning up a little bit of debris here and there from the storms over the summer or over the winter and, you know, grading some gravel roads and just, just typical maintenance for this time of year. Is there anything that, any questions that you have for me this month about the agenda?
Anyone have questions on the ongoing work?
Madam Chair, this is Steve.
Supervisor Clinton, thank you.
Question on what you said about mowing and it's being self-performed now. Do you know, did VDOT have to hire staff to be able to accommodate that?
No, no, we're mowing with our, our own staff. It does take a few away that we would normally be doing other things with this time of year. But we, we self-perform all of our secondary mowing anyway. We typically so, use contractors in the primaries because it's a lot more and it helps us get them done faster and we do those more times a year. So.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions regarding his update? All right, let's go down our list. Supervisor Michael, any concerns from Blue Ridge?
No, I want to thank you for your quick response to my letter and we'll be getting back to you with a response. But thank you.
Okay.
Ben Castle?
Passed along a little list, which mostly Mr. Blevins is already familiar with. So he's good with that. And I certainly appreciate him taking a look at some issues that we had there in Eagle Rock. We're good.
Valley?
Nothing in Valley.
Nothing in Valley. Supervisor Clinton, do you have anything from Amsterdam that you would like VDOT to take a look at?
Just, just one quick thing that frankly, I don't have it fully defined yet, but just to let Mr. Blevins know that this will be coming up. It's kind of an old issue in general. And the issue is four-way stops. And acknowledging VDOT's general resistance to four-way stops, I just want to say that interest is building on four-way, four-way stop intersection behind the high school like Avalia and Camelia, for example, because of some new development that will feed traffic into those intersections. So I just wanted you to, to be aware, Mr. Blevins, that that issue will be coming up again. And we're, we're hopeful that VDOT will be a little more flexible this time around. But more to come on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Supervisor Clinton. From Buchanan, I would like us to take a look at Pyco Road. I think last summer you did some work that was very much appreciated by residents. I've heard from them already this spring about some branches and some trees. That is a, is a tree-laden road, as you know, and it quickly grows and it quickly becomes a problem for, for larger vehicles passing through there. So if you could take a look at Pyco Road, I very much appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, last month, we talked about Frontage Road north of the 168 intersection. Did you have any feedback on that? There's some flooding that's going on and this rain that we've had is not certainly helping anything. I know it's increasing y'all's workload.
We, it has. We, we've reviewed the area. We haven't been able to locate what the issue is, but some of the storms we had over the last couple of months have been pretty heavy, especially multiple day events. I mean, the one we had today probably won't cause those same issues. So it'd be difficult to go out and review it and say, okay, I can see why it's happening. So I had a similar issue in Craig with the same question and they went out to look at it today and it's not doing what the guy said it was doing because it hasn't rained that much. But like I said, they haven't been able to identify exactly what the problem is yet, but I'm sure we can schedule some ditching, pipe cleaning, that type of thing. I mean.
I think pipe cleaning is.
It'd have to help.
Cover cleaning is probably what's needed in talking to some residents. But it is flowing directly into, into one residence yard pretty significantly.
Okay.
So we'll address that. Any other concerns for VDOT? Okay, we have about seven minutes before we can open our public hearing.
I can come back.
Pardon me?
I can come back.
Just, just sit, sit, sit closely. Don't, don't go all the way to the top. Ms. Davis, do you want to, to come down? I'm looking at, at the items that might be doable in seven minutes. So I think we can go ahead and go to Item 14. This is the consideration of additional appropriation for a one-time bonus for Bodatot County Public School employees.
Good afternoon again. Yes, so for 2025, the state has approved a 1% one-time bonus, I'm sorry, not 1%, a $1,000 one-time bonus for SOQ-funded instructional positions and support staff to be paid in June. The appropriation that would be needed for this is $491,864 coming from the state. Bodatot County Public Schools has additionally requested to extend this bonus to include all employees. The proposed bonus would be $1,000 for all full-time employees and 500 for part-time employees. So the additional appropriation needed for that coming from local funds is $336,503. So it is recommended that we appropriate a total of $828,367 in funding for fiscal year 2025 to accommodate this one-time bonus. Are there any questions that Brandon can answer? I'm happy to answer any questions, too.
And Mr. Lee's here from, from the school administrative office. So if we have any questions for him, I'm assuming you'll take those. Any questions?
Oh, man.
Any question? Do I have a motion to approve?
To approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additional appropriation for the one-time bonus for Bodatot County Public School employees. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, Mr. Blevins, back to you. If you walk slowly, I think we will hit our 2:30 right on the dot. Yeah, we can, we can take a minute to get technology working.
Tiffany's just too good.
Do me, do it. I'll just do it slow. It should be. See, you can use the spacebar or the little arrows. Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon again. It's that time of year again that we go through our secondary six-year plan for Bodatot County. Every year, you have to take a look and approve the priority list and the funding for the first fiscal year coming. So it'd be fiscal year 26. So what we see here is a typical print screen or a capture of our internal system that shows the funding allocations over the six-year, what's called a six-year improvement plan or funding plan. For the fiscal year 26, you have $70,093 in telefees. Telefees can be used on most types of projects, just about, just about anything that a VDOT project can be used to build, that we can, we can use those for that. The district grant unpaid funds for fiscal year 26 is $546,027. Those can only be used to pave existing VDOT roadways that have at least 50 vehicles per day or more. We typically try to do those on what we call lowest hanging fruit, the ones that are a little wider, the ones that carry more traffic that'll affect the most people. We usually try to prioritize those first, of course, with, with the board's support. The current priority list, you'll see that Franger Trail and Blue Ridge Drive are both marked out. They are both completed. So typically they fall off or become what we call priority number zeros on the list. Stevens Road will be next. Should be some, should start sometime this summer, but it kind of depends on what all we have to do to prep that and get the, get the plans ready. Hunter's Green is also on there. That was funded through the six-year plan. Thankfully that the board was able to add that, I think, last year. And we were able to get that pushed out to a paving contractor over the winter. So that one most likely will fall off the list by the end of the year, but it's still there as a priority for now. You have Fives Ballpark Road, Mountain Valley Road, Blamen Town Road, each one of those moving in successive years. Roy Road, Old Hollow Road, Red Bud Lane, and Haymaker Town Road, which was the last one. And I believe we added that one last year. So for potential projects, and Ashley may have mentioned these in March. I was out on vacation then. Bowling Springs Road, $650,000, 50 vehicles a day, 1.25 miles in length. The rest of Franger Trail, it would start where the last one ended. It'd be about 550. And these are very rough estimates. And then the approximate length of a mile treaty. I know that one's been requested for a while. I've been talking about it since I've been here and I celebrate my 20th year this year and we've been talking about it for a while. 2.6 miles and again, 50, 50 vehicles a day. So it does qualify. Sugar Tree Hollow Road, we have heard about it a few times as well. It has 90 vehicles a day on it. It's very long and fairly narrow in places. That's why the estimate is as high as it is. That's why the estimate is, is as high as it is. That would be to do the entire project at once and that would have to be put out by contract. We would not be able to accomplish that out of my office. Zion Hill Road, 550, also about 1.15 miles and 140 vehicles a day. So it has decent volume on it for a gravel road. And this is the proposed priority list. I think developed a little bit from the work session, a little bit from comments from citizens. But what we're showing is that, I think, the other, in the Fringer Trail, Flowing Springs Road and Zion Hill Road would be your next priorities added after Haymaker Town. If that is what, what the board so desires. So are there any questions for me?
Madam Chair, a question I had was, you know, you take a look at the telefees and district grant, district grant unpaved between FY 2029 and FY 2030. That drops just a couple thousand dollars. Reasoning why?
There are projections. They're projections based on funding, based, also based on a formula as to the number of miles of unpaved road you'd have. So as your unpaved roads go down, they actually would qualify for this funding. Your funding will also decrease.
Thank you.
Other questions? So if we can go back to the proposed list.
It went back further, faster than it went forward.
Yeah.
Here you go.
Thank you. I guess I would ask if Trevee has been on the docket for so long, why is that not reflected on the list? Could that be a, a 12 going forward?
It could be. It could be. It's based on board's desire, really. That one is a fairly difficult project. It has a very sharp vertical curve at the top of the hill there. That's one of the reasons why we'd stated in the past that we didn't feel like it would qualify for this program, although it may qualify if we just pave it in place. But that doesn't improve safety. All it does is pave it. So it would help folks get through there, but unfortunately they may also increase their speeds.
Excellent. Yeah.
Yep.
Other thoughts on, on this?
No, I'm glad to see Zion Hill on there, especially with 140 cars a day. Does that move it up a little bit as far as the reason at least showed up this time?
At least for what we've done in the past. He said, I haven't actually presented one of these in about seven years. It was either Ray or Ashley after I moved over to do it in Roanoke County only. But this one would have been what we consider a, a good candidate. It's higher volume. It's mostly residential, if I remember correctly. And it's, it's decently in good shape. But we've got an estimate on it, but we may, we may beat that estimate by quite a bit and get it much, much lower. It really depends on how much maintenance work you do before we get there. But yes, I believe that would be a very good candidate.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do I go ahead and open the public hearing now? To let anyone comment on this? So I'd like to open the public hearing for the VDOT FY 26 through 31 Secondary System, Six-Year Plan and FY 26 Budget with consideration of approval to follow public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on the proposed projects for the six-year plan? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and the six-year plan is now approved. Okay. All right. Good deal. Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Blevins. We will now move on to Agenda Item 11. Mr. John Hall is here with the Roanoke Regional Partnership to give us the annual presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the, of the board supervisors. It's my pleasure to join you this afternoon and present to you our 2024 Annual Update from the Roanoke Regional Partnership. So thanks again for the, for the opportunity. Start with a bit of background. The Roanoke Regional Partnership was established in 1983. It is a public-private partnership. Exactly half of the budget is funded by virtue of per capita local government contributions. And half the budget is funded by the private sector, private businesses who invest with the partnership. Total budget for the Roanoke Regional Partnership is 1.6 million. About 47% of that is public, about 53% is private. We have 10 employees, a 33-member board of directors and 17-member executive committee. And we do our work in partnership with your team. So we're in contact really on a near daily basis with Mr. LaRue, of course, Mr. McFadden, who is no longer director of the Economic Development Department, Luke Campbell, Tiffany Bradbury, Nicole Pendleton and others on your team, but in, in regular daily contact with economic development and county administration. The partnership is really an umbrella organization consisting of, of three organizations. Okay, and that, that is the Roanoke Regional Partnership, Roanoke Outside Foundation and Get to Know Oak Foundation. The Roanoke Outside Foundation and Get to Know Oak Foundation provide some additional fundraising and operational avenues for the partnership. So that $1.6 million is descriptive of the Roanoke Regional Partnership's budget. Roanoke Outside adds another $700,000, okay, of budget to the overall economic development effort. But that is funded exclusively through beverage sales and event registrations. So you think of that as bonus value that we use to help market the region and its outdoor brand. The partnership serves eight localities, which are members of our organization. Those are the cities of Covington, Roanoke and Salem, counties of Allegheny, Bodotot, Franklin and Roanoke, and the town of Benton. And that's really with one goal, which is growing the regional economy. We have a four-part strategic plan, economic growth and innovation, growing business, attracting new business. And really the three other areas are subservient to that with the main, you know, the main goal is growing the economy. Through the years, we determined that working to address real estate, market-ready real estate, working to address talent attraction, attracting more residents and workers to live here, as well as place-making and livability all fit hand in hand. And it's really working quite well. Last year, our successful projects contributed to $265 million of new regional economic activity. You can think of things like new economic sectors, suppliers and contractors, hotel stays of, of contractors, more air service demand, retail and restaurant. When workers earn wages, they spend it throughout, throughout the economy and they spend it in a way that is regional, a business that locates within Bodotot, for instance, contributes wages to workers throughout this larger regional footprint, who then spend for goods and services. A, a new project like Munters back in 2021, when it was new, it led to more demand among its contractors and suppliers as well. So it, it does work quite well from a regional standpoint. Of course, a big part of what we do is have conversations and develop what you would call leads with businesses, okay, that are looking to locate or expand. Last year, we had 527 project files open up. And that's more than double the level of 2019 from the pre-pandemic year. And so we're seeing a high level, high level of interest. And last year was a record, 527 new opportunity files. We do that work not only in partnership with our local governments, but also with Virginia Economic Development Partnership, who you see in the photo on the slide. You'll know those are some nifty shirts. And we are launching a store this summer that's going to feature a Bodotot sweatshirt as well. So I, I will be the first to buy that one. I mentioned already, I think, $162 million in, or $265 million of new economic activity. That was as a result of, of this slide, okay? So last year, 390 new jobs and $162 million in new capital investment activity from the, the companies represented on the slide, which include Mack Trucks, a new customer fulfillment center in the city of Roanoke for Amazon, Tiny Cargo, which is the first manufacturer to grow out of the Fraylon Biomedical Research Institute, an outdoor establishment in Salem named Shrewd, Goodwill Industries, Homestead Creamery, which we all know and love throughout the region, their ice cream product. And of course, Universal, an expansion of a Volvo supplier here that happened in, in the Trailville area here in southern Bodotot County. And you'll see this again next year because this is a current year result. But I just want to, again, celebrate the announced expansion of Munters, 270 new jobs and 29.9 million capital investment in an expansion of a company that the partnership partnered with Bodotot County to attract in 2021. The announcement of this expansion was exactly four years to the day of their original expansion. So that, that shows, I think, continued positive momentum and just what's possible here in, in Bodotot County. You may remember that the, the partnership, of course, we are a public-private partnership and we raise our private contributions on a five-year cycle. So the last campaign was known as Thrive 2027. We're coming up near the end of our five-year cycle in terms of results. We've got about another couple of years left. But already we can show substantial performance. So when we raise those funds, we set goals in terms of capital investment and in terms of employment creation. And I'm proud to report that we're 151% of our private capital, of our capital investment goal, which was set at $350 million. The partnership with its local government partners have attracted $530 million of new capital investment regionally since 2022. And the region is at 2,600 jobs of a goal of 3,000. 89% of the employment, announced employment creation goal has been met. So the results are substantial and progress is occurring in real time. And really more, nearly a billion dollars of new economic activity have been, have been generated since 2022 as well. So we're excited about, about the opportunity ahead. We have some major, incredibly large opportunities in the pipeline and really excited about what that means for our regional economy. Last year, last fall, the Roanoke region actually grew its employment at a rate that was faster than Northern Virginia, state of Virginia or the, or the US. This is the rate of change employment growth from 2023 to 2024. And I think that was Sep, with a September date, September 23 to September 24. And I think this is the first time I've seen this metric in, I think, my entire career. So again, employment growth is substantial. I think half, again, half of manufacturing growth from 2019 to 2023 has happened in the Roanoke region. These are wealth-creating, wealth-generating jobs, okay, in manufacturing. You manufacture a product here in this market that is sold elsewhere, contributing new wealth that is spent through wages. And so the progress and momentum is substantial and it, and it's borne out in the data. Last year, our marketing team did put together three new videos to spread the word on the opportunity as it relates to business investment, innovation, but also talent attraction and livability. We launched two new websites, roanoke.org and gettoknowoak.com. Get to Know Oak is really quite exciting. It does have a new neighborhood finder tool, a portal that connects talent with job opportunities. Of course, new photography, new video within a playful and colorful design that's attractive to talent of all ages. Our website visits, social media following, email contacts were all up substantially. And in terms of our outdoor events, which are really intended to build the brand of this region as an outdoor community, the economic impact of $5.4 million, that's in addition to the $265 million that's represented by new companies, 56,000 attendees from nine countries, 42 states. And, and that has resulted in 46,000 of additional revenue that's contributed directly into new outdoor amenities. And so we've, we've invested in things like river put-ins and, and trails and, and things of that nature to, to enhance the outdoor infrastructure available to residents and visitors. And again, the goal here, we are not a tourism organization, is to build the outdoor brand, which newly locating and expanding companies understand contributes to their success in attracting talent. Spoke about the outdoor infrastructure investment last year in 2024. 25,000 was funded, nine different projects, lifetime of 175,000 and 33 projects. Again, building the outdoor infrastructure in the region. Net migration is positive, which again, that, that enables the job growth that we're seeing regionally. We grew our group of talent ambassadors who spell, tell the sports, tell the story of what makes this region unique and attractive from a employment, employment as well as livability standpoint. We held a talent summit event between employers and educational institutions to collaborate together and develop future talent opportunities, talk about internships, cooperatives, and to build those connections that are going to be crucial, right? Now, crucial already, but will be even more crucial as the war for talent intensifies. We had 261 attendees and 41% of those represented private sector companies. So we had, had a lot of private sector interest in the event. We like to lead by example, so we hosted three interns last year, small office of nine. If we can do it, I think everyone can, right? And last summer and about to start this year was our onboard ROA Young Professional Intern Summer Program. We had 46 participants in that last year, which represented a 43% increase over the year before. If anyone's in the audience has interns or young professionals, it doesn't matter if they're reluctant, sign them up, okay? They'll enjoy it. They'll learn something. They'll have fun. But regionally, look, we're stronger than ever together by collaborating, by cooperating. We're capable of, of doing great things together and I'm proud of our association and relationship and affiliation with you. Thankful for your partnership and grateful for the opportunity to work together. Thank you again. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Great work. Any questions for Mr. Hall? Comments?
Good job.
Madam Chair, I have a question, if I may.
Certainly. Mr. Clinton?
So, John, you, you mentioned the budget and that it's rough, as far as the contributions go, it's roughly 50/50 between public sector and private sector. What, what's My question is how you achieve that? Do you all set, do you set goals for specific organizations? And then you go out and, and seek their contributions to that level? Or you let it go by itself? Or just, how do you accomplish that? Especially thinking about the region is growing and you're growing and therefore your budget has to increase. So how do you keep that elasticity going?
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Clinton, we are very frugal in our, in our management of the organization. So it's $2.07 per cap- So it's $2.07 per capita for the local government partners. And that rate of contribution has not changed, I think, in 15 or 16 years. And so the private revenue provides the most immediate opportunity to to increase the treasury as well as the highly entrepreneurial work of Roanoke outside foundation. That's one reason why our outdoor events continue to grow. So in terms of the private money, we do five year capital campaigns. We work with a professional group that does this for regional economic development groups to the country that assists with setting the goal. But it actually boils down to strong private and public leadership. Okay, so we sat down with the company that of this region. We present the value proposition to them, the type of return that's possible by virtue of of employment growth and new residents to the region. And we have, I'm very grateful for over 120 private businesses that that see the vision, that understand the types of return and want to see their region thrive economically. Okay, and so they invest every year in the partnership and its budget, really with the goal of a stronger economy.
Good, whatever you're doing is working. So thank you for that response.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, if I might make mention, Mr. Hall is very humble in the way that he presents himself and the way that he presents the work that he does. And I might make mention that that you may want to quiz him on being named one of the top 50 economic developers in the nation. And we have him here in front of us that could answer the question.
Well, thank you. That that is news to me. So I would ask, do you know any of the top 50 economic developers in the nation?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's quite an honor. We're lucky to be working with you collaboratively and appreciate all your efforts. That's fantastic news.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
John, you've been working with and what you have dedicated towards each and every county that we're in the realm here has been awesome. So I know we've we've called upon you several times and you're always there to give us the answers or speak to the public when necessary. So thank you so much for all you do and your team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott Horn. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item will be number 12, Mr. Mormon. If you could come down, this is for the consideration of in house installation of vehicle equipment.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to share this with you today. Just as a matter of some brief background, the sheriff's office, as you all know, acquires and brings into service and out of service each year a certain quantity of vehicles for for its law enforcement activities. And when they acquire and prepare to put those vehicles into service, radio and communications equipment has to be installed in those vehicles, lighting, all kinds of customization has to be done on those vehicles. And then likewise, when vehicles are taken out of service by the department, a technician has to remove all of that. Currently, the sheriff has been contracting that work. In fact, it's been contracted for years. And Sheriff's Department personnel, along with our Director of Emergency Communications, Matt Hinkle, took a look at that. And I think it was Sergeant William Bentley from the sheriff's office. And they put their heads together and they discovered that with what the sheriff's department has been paying to contract those services, that the county could hire an in service technician and do that work for no more and likely less money. But then also have a technician that would be available for additional work, most notably to back up technicians on the emergency communication system that the county is is getting ready to build. So they put together a proposal with that information, shared it with county administration. Mr. Ru took that to the Budget Subcommittee, Mr. Clinton and Mr. Michael. They reviewed it, vetted it, discussed it with the sheriff and staff and are recommending for your consideration of hiring a full time technician to do this work, to discontinue contracting the work out to third party vendors. And the sheriff has generously agreed to transfer money from his budgets to the emergency communications budget to cover this work. This position would report directly to Matt Hinkle. And so that's a proposal before you that if you'd be agreeable to approve the hiring of this position. And then subsequently, there would be some transfers of funding that Ms. Davis would probably bring to you for consideration. Mr. Hinkle's here to be able to answer questions. Of course, Mr. Michael, Mr. Clinton were involved, may have comments they'd like to share. Unfortunately, Sergeant Bentley was unable to join us today. But if you have any questions we can't answer today, we'll certainly be happy to get back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mormon. Questions for Mr. Mormon or comments from Mr. Clinton? Do you have any additional comments from your work on the Budget Subcommittee?
No, I would say that going into it, going into the discussion, I wasn't real enthusiastic about it, frankly. But and that's simply because I have kind of a reluctance to expand government staffing. But as we talked about the details and and the advantages that will come from this reliability and consistent knowledge base, predictability, this is a case where it just makes sense to to have it in in the government's hands, in my opinion, rather than rather than the unpredictable pricing and availability of contract individuals. So to me, it makes a lot of sense. And it's probably it'll probably save money. It will certainly, it'll certainly improve efficiency for the sheriff. So it took a while, but I came around where I'm in full favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. Mr. Michael, do you have any comments?
I do. This was the easiest item I've ever worked on to get better service, quicker service for less money. How can you not do it?
Other questions?
No, thank you all for reviewing and bringing it to our attention.
I would, I would love to ask Mr. Hinkle. Sorry, is he back there talking? I hate to make you walk all the way down the steps. I'm gonna make you walk all the way down the steps. I think my colleagues have convinced me, and I do believe too, it's it's better to have this expertise in house. So this question is simply so we can all understand this. What's the skill set involved with hiring this position? And what's the talent pool look like for this position?
The talent pool is not exactly wide. I'll grant you that. But the skill set, I mean, is very specialized, hence why it's not so wide. It's not only just the radios, but it's lights, it's the cages, the cameras and everything that goes inside, all the technology that goes inside these vehicles. So yeah, it's quite a specialized skill set. There are some folks that we know within the industry that have expressed interest. We feel that should the position be approved, we should be able to move forward rather quickly and get this somebody on board.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hinkle? Okay, the consideration before us is to hire a full time technician to perform the work that has just been described. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, I think that's very exciting, very, very exciting. Thank you, Mr. Mormon. Our next item is a consideration of matching funds for a Department of Conservation and Recreation Dam Safety Grant.
And, Miss Chairman, I'll handle this as well. So this item is a little bit more complicated. I'll try to make it as simple and brief as I can. So you all know, the county owns two dams. One is Greenfield Dam here that was developed as part of Bodata Center at Greenfield to handle stormwater management for for this whole park property. The second one is Orchard Lake Dam, which is in an adjacent subdivision, Orchard Lake subdivision. It was an agricultural dam that was built sometime probably in the early 1900s. And its its ownership came as somewhat of a surprise to us. We did not realize, but part of the dam impoundment approaches over on the property that we bought, when we, when the county bought the property to develop Bodata Center at Greenfield. So that being the case, that made us a co owner of that structure. Now, why that's important is that dam is regulated by the Department of Conservation and Recreation with Commonwealth of Virginia. That department, in recent years, following some changes in regulations, has become more vigilant about monitoring and inspect and inspecting all dam structures in the Commonwealth, even small originally agricultural structures such as this one that previously, while technically regulated, had really not been regulated in practical terms at all by the state. So the Department of Conservation and Recreation notified the other owners of the dam, Dural and Julie Fraze, who are here in the audience. It, the dam is actually on real estate that they own. And it was discovered that it was also on real estate we own. So that's how the county became part of this. The Department of Conservation and Recreation shared information about what needed to be done to make sure the dam was in compliance or certain maintenance activities that needed to happen, some tree clearing. Flood inundation studies needed to be performed to see what the risk hazard was of the of the structure. Other improvements might would be necessary. There was an emergency response plan that needs to be developed and have to be exercised and monitoring on, I think, an annual basis. The dam would have to be permitted and that would have to be redone every so often. So a pretty big undertaking, particularly for private property owner. So the county has has worked with the phrases for the last few years and has engaged property owners of folks who surround the lake and who benefit from the lake. Mr. Clinton, being in his district, has graciously participated in those meetings and helped coordinate and facilitate those. The long and short of those meetings was to have a discussion with the neighborhood group as to whether they would like to preserve the dam and undertake the work that needed to be done and the operation of the dam in perpetuity. Or whether they would like to consider another option. And really, the other option is to breach the dam and drain the lake. So I believe we've had, we had two community meetings on the matter that we hosted here at Greenfield. Very constructive, cordial meetings. There has not been a consensus reached amongst in the neighborhood that the neighbors would like to either form a, for example, a homeowners association that would take ownership and responsibility for the dam or otherwise whereby they would all join in a collective and voluntarily do what's necessary to to bring the dam into compliance and to operate it. And so that being the cases, the case, the phrases have decided that their preferred course of action would be that the dam be breached and the lake drained. And there would be a natural waterway creek that would continue to stay there, but the the lake would go away. The county certainly has no objection to that. We don't have an interest really one way or the other in in terms of there being the lake. Now, we do have an interest, if we're a party, to capital investments in the structure and ongoing maintenance and operation. And the Department of Conservation and Recreation, frankly, would like to see the dam go away. It would be one less structure that they have to monitor and inspect and regulate. And frankly, part of the reason why we are where we are is because they don't have the staffing and resources that they need to do their job properly. So the recommendation before you is to consider authorizing funding, match funding for a Department of Conservation and Recreation Grant. If the grant is awarded, we would receive 50% of the funds necessary to do the work. And this first grant is for engineering study and analysis to determine what would need to be done and how work would need to be done to breach the dam structure, drain the lake, remediate what's currently under the lake and basically, you know, do away with the lake. We've had some preliminary cost estimates prepared by an engineering firm by ECI here in Daleville about the work. They estimated that all of the work, including the breaching of the dam, would be approximately a million dollars. This is a first estimate. You know, no one would really know the cost until engineering study and work is done. But based on that estimate, we filed an application with DCR for the stage one grant. That grant is being considered. But part of what they need to complete that grant application is a statement from the board, something on the record, saying that the board would be willing to fund 50% of those matching funds for that grant. Based on the cost estimate, we expect that 50% to be approximately $80,000.
Approximately how much?
About $80,000. So if if that's what we would ask you to consider would be to agree to allocate up to $80,000 in matching funds for this grant. Say, the longer term, the longer term vision here is that this money would be reimbursed and would be repaid by creating a service district that would consist of all the properties that surround the lake, all the property owners that have benefited from the lake. And that would be a service district that would need to be created by this board. I believe a public hearing would need to be advertised and held on that. You all would have to pass an ordinance to establish that service district. And you'd also establish a levy, a special levy, that would be imposed on property owners within the service district that over a period of years would raise the funds to repay the cost of of this work. So that's the concept and that's the idea. As I said, Mr. Clinton's worked, put many, many hours into this, talking with property owners and working with staff and the phrases to try to move this to a amenable resolution that that would be acceptable to folks. I will not stand here today and represent to you that this course of action is will be welcomed and applauded by all the property owners. I would suspect that there are some property owners that would like to see that lake remain. But the community has failed to come together and and join together to help make that happen. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Lockaby's been involved in this a little bit, given some advice, but not directly involved unless he become a witness. Mr. Clinton may have comments and be welcome to try to address any questions you have.
Can we ask if Mr. Clinton has any additional comments on this?
Obviously, this is not something that you see every day. This is an unusual situation. And the the issue affects a lot of people. And I just just want to say on behalf of David Mormon, he did an excellent job in assembling the neighbors and then coming up with conceivable solutions like the service district, for example. So difficult situation, but so far, so good, I think is proceeding well. If we can, if we can get the grant, which will take care of 50% of the cost and if we can make a case, which I think we can, that the best approach is to create a service district to reimburse the county for funds they'll put forward for the breaching of the dam, then I think what we will solve what could have been a very difficult situation. So to me, it makes it makes a lot of sense, this approach does. And it was, it was taken very soberly and seriously. And I think, I don't know how many meetings we had, David, three or four, with the neighbors and with other people with expertise. with expertise, technology companies, engineering companies with the expertise in dams. So like I say, it's an unusual situation. I think we're headed in the right direction, though. And I'm certainly in favor of proceeding with the process that David just outlined.
How big do you anticipate this service district being?
I'm going to guess maybe 12 to 15 property owners, 10 or so, 10, 12, something like that.
And they would bear the tax levy to pay the county back for the money spent?
Correct.
You said, you mentioned $80,000 would be our initial input? How does $80,000 get us to a 50% match of a million?
Well, so the million cost estimate included the actual construction work. The phase one grant is only for engineering studies and design, so that work would be.
This $80 would go strictly to?
Right, approximately $160,000 is the engineer's estimate.
Come up with a plan.
Right, and hopefully, that's a good realistic estimate.
What do we anticipate to be the impacts on adjoining, obviously, there's a financial impact to property owners, but what about their property and water? So we're changing the dynamics of the water flow through this region pretty significantly by eliminating a dam.
Well, I'm not a geologist or whoever studies such things, so I won't.
Civil engineer.
I won't venture too many comments, other than to say, my understanding is it should not have a real significant impact, long term, in terms of the drainage of water. It will still come down to the same area. Instead of it being, coming into a lake, it will be a creek that will flow down, and it will still flow, you know, here into our property line where Greenfield Lake end is out, and then going down from there towards Catawba Road. So the overall drainage won't be altered. You know, the property, so in talking with the Frazes, my understanding is that the lake itself is not very deep for most property owners. In fact, at the far end of the lake, it's probably only maybe a few feet deep. So not all of the lake is navigable, if you will, or floatable. I think the deepest part of the lake is, how high is it? 10 feet is the deepest part of the lake. So it's a pretty shallow lake. Now, certainly, people's property, it's currently water-covered, is not going to be any longer, but.
They don't own the lake.
They don't own the lake. They own property under the lake.
The county and the Frazes own the dam.
The dam, yes. And so because the Frazes and the county are the dam owners, we are legally the responsible parties.
In the nicest way.
The eyes of the state.
Owners of the dam, not the dam owners.
Yeah, there you go. Owners of the dam.
Other questions?
If no other questions, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion for, two motions, I guess. The first one being the approval allocation of $8,000 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance to match a DCR grant. And the second would be to authorize the county attorney to research and present to the board at a future meeting actions.
So we have two motions. We should do them one at a time, I think. So.
Madam Chair, can we hear the motions again, or can I? It didn't come through.
I'm sorry, Steve. The first one, there's two motions would be, the first one being the approval of the allocation of the $80,000 from the general fund, unassigned balance, or undesignated, excuse me, fund balance to match the DCR grant funds and to provide engineering study and design service to Orchard Lake Dam. The second one is to authorize county attorney to research and present to the board of future meeting acts and the process necessarily to establish Orchard Lake Service District as a proposed to conduct and fund the breach, removal, and remediation of the Orchard Lake Dam.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll need to take these one at a time. If I understand these motions correctly, the first motion would be to authorize undesignated fund balance of $80,000 to conduct, to be put toward a study to determine what would be involved with removing this dam. That doesn't authorize us to actually do the work.
Correct.
Okay, so there's a stopgap there. The motion is, let's do them one at a time, to allocate appropriate $80,000 from our undesignated fund balance for a matching grant to study.
To provide engineering.
To go toward engineering support for this, for this project. That's the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll say, not real comfortable with citing a specific number. That $80,000, don't know whether, I think it's probably low, frankly, but if it is low, and if $80,000 doesn't cover it, then what do we do, would be my question. So is there a way that we can reword that to somehow make official our, the general range of dollars that we're talking about, but provide some flexibility? Like, I don't know what the number is, and nobody does. Say, maybe up to $100,000 or?
Exactly.
Up to 100?
Not to exceed $100,000. Would that be all right, Steve?
Yeah, I think it would be, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to amend the motion?
I'll amend the motion and for the approval of the allocation up to or not to exceed $100,000 from the general fund, a designated fund balance to match DCR grant funds to provide engineering study and design.
The amended. So we have an amended motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for this fund, for these funds to be used up not to exceed $100,000 for the initial engineering study of this project. A motion and a second. Any discussion, further discussion? I'm going to say, I'm a little concerned that there is no public input here, that I'm not hearing from folks, but I think Mr. Clinton has heard from many of these citizens. Is that correct?
Not so much on an individual basis, just collectively in meetings that we've had that Mr. Mormon describes. But there hasn't been a groundswell of concern locally, to the best of my knowledge.
You said five? Okay. That's my only real concern at this point. I think we're authorizing nothing but the study of this project. So I think down the road, there will ultimately be opportunity for other voices to be heard. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, we have a second motion that has been made to authorize the engineering study of this project to begin.
To authorize the county attorney to research and bring back to you at a future meeting how to create a service district.
That's the second motion. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
That has been moved by Dr. Scott Horn, seconded by Supervisor Clinton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Now, item 15, consider amendments to the subdivision and zoning ordinance language. Ms. Pendleton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you.
This is a resolution to place potential draft amendments on a future agenda for the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors. On July 1, there are specific amendments that the state has signed into law, which reduces the amount of time that we have to conduct site plan and subdivision reviews, among a host of other things. And so I would like to thank Mr. Lockaby for preparing the draft amendments that are in your package. They generally, and I think I spoke with the Planning Commission, about 92%, maybe a little higher of them, are specifically related to the state code requirements that we are being required to amend the ordinance for, and a few others are just general cleanup items. And so we are continuing to work on that, as well as some other projects that I had mentioned last month. And I know that the recommendation in the package was that we would ask that this be placed on the June Planning Commission agenda. However, the advertising deadline for that has passed prior to your ability to take action on that recommendation. So we would bump that to July, if you all do agree to do that. And also, just as a note, we've spoke also about fee schedule updates, that we have the potential to bring those forward at the same time, as well as some bonding policy adjustments that would follow, just really directly in line with the process and procedures that are outlined by the proposed amendments. So the draft in your package is not meant to be taken any action on today. It's just merely the draft language that we are continuing to work through. That was, again, prepared by Mr. Lockaby, so I want to thank him for that. And then we will have the formalized amendments, should you all vote to place those on the July agenda for your review and consideration, following the Planning Commission's recommendation in July. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have one question. These timelines, are these reasonable for you to be able to meet them?
Mr. Michael, I would just, we don't meet the timelines in place now, and they are being shortened by the state. And so, you know, we are in a really precarious predicament, and that staffing is complicated, and the work is getting more complicated. We will do our best, and we will work with our partners to continue to do our best. Hopefully, that may, you know, we may be looking for some other ways to alleviate that. Hopefully, we can get fully staffed and technology in place, and some of the other things that we have out there on our to-do list to be able to move forward, to get to a better place, and to efficiently serve our development community better. Thank you.
Other questions? No action required, break.
A resolution to place it on a future agenda.
Do I have a motion? Place this on a future agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing that. Now, we have citizen comment period, general comments. I have three that have been given to me. If anyone else would like to speak, grab a piece of paper and bring it up here, and I will call on you. But first, we have Danny Goad.
My name's Danny Goad. I reside in the Valley District. I'd like to say thank you, Madam Chairman, Board of Supervisors, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking because of, I think it was item 13, Orchard Lake. I don't know a lot of the details about it, but just in the time that I've been sitting here listening to this, I do know that there are 12 people around that lake. I sell real estate, and property values are impacted by the conditions of the land. All those homes were purchased with a lake there. Not only those 12 that are around the lake, but many more houses across the streets, those on Fairview, the streets leading into that subdivision. They, the value of their property is impacted by that. And it seems to me that this special problem has presented itself because of, because the county owns part of the dam. The county has not always owned part of the dam. Now, if this was under private ownership, the demand to repair it would be somewhat different on a private individual than on Bodataut County or a locality, because the locality has the ability to pay where a group of individuals may not be. I'm really surprised to find out that the county has bought a piece of land, and they have no idea that they own a dam. That is not due diligence. And at some point in time, this was discussed. And these minutes are available, and those discussions are available. It may have been a while back, but it can be known what was known. And the county has a real responsibility, if they're going to accept responsibility for this, to make it right for these landowners. How many other times can people get in trouble in the county? Something that they didn't precipitate, something they didn't cause, something totally outside their control. And are you going to attempt to throw a bunch of fees and taxes on them? Now, I've heard enough in just a few minutes to know not many people were talked to. And I would venture to say that very few people in that neighborhood understand the potential loss to them because of that lake. If there's going to be a study, it needs to involve the downstream lake as well. What's the capacity to contain any potential overflow from this lake? If the elevation's not that great, means may need to be undertaken to just be able to handle the overflow without that much of an increase in pressure. That downstream lake, which is totally owned by the county, I guess, that needs to come into the picture. And it may be that it could handle that lake. I know it's, at least area-wise, it's a smaller lake, but it still may be able to handle if the elevation changes aren't that great. Private individuals being required to hold up the mandate of the county or the mandate that the state might put on the county is a tremendous burden. And that tells me that I would never want to buy a piece of property anywhere close to any property owned by Bodataut County or the state, for that matter, because I might have to pay for it. And I know maybe things haven't been fully developed. But another consequence of this is a taxing authority, that the county attorney doesn't know how he'll do it. That's a big deal for everybody in Bodataut County, to have individual taxing authority. It's been attempted here before, and the people rejected it. And there's a lot at stake in this question. And I ask you to consider all the aspects of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Clanch? Eric Clontz?
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Rocky Forge Wind Construction has significantly damaged Mill Creek from stormwater runoff, and the county has turned a blind eye and allowed it to happen. On seven April, after a very heavy rain, Mill Creek ran red with mud, mud from the construction site, a clear violation of the county's stormwater and erosion regulations. I submitted a violation claim to the EQ, Department of Environmental Quality, with photographic evidence, and the county responded as if everything was normal. Three weeks ago, I visited the county planning office, and I asked, who is the stormwater, of the county stormwater manager? I was told Nadine Carson. However, Nadine emailed me saying she was not the POC for this project to speak with Mark Bowles. So I did. He told me he conducted the site visit. I asked to see a written report substantiating Nicole Pendleton's claim to DEQ that the site was in compliance. Mr. Bowles said, "The report is still in work." This, fully a month after I reported the violation to DEQ, and DEQ's guidance was for the county to, quote, "provide a written response within ten business days detailing findings." I submitted a FOIA request the next day to see the detailed stormwater findings, but all I received responsive to my request was Nicole Pendleton's email to the EQ stating the site was, quote, "generally found to be in compliance." My pictures countered by the county's vague words with no detailed findings. Why isn't Nadine Carson managing this project? Perhaps because she's a certified third-party contractor from Roanoke, not under Delegate Terry Austin's jurisdiction. And she likely would have stopped work until soil erosion conditions were corrected. Oh, bad press. Can't publicize the irony of a project supposedly saving the environment, but instead actually destroying it. Terry Austin has acted as dictator, requiring this project to proceed at all costs, and to keep any project publicity out of the news and the public eye. And all of you are doing his bidding, answering to him and shirking your duties and to the county citizens whom you serve. Delegate Austin is being primaried this year. I urge all to hear me, to vote for Austin Schwend in three weeks to replace him. May your consciences be troubled until you revert to serving your constituents and your Creator, rather than being blackmailed by Richmond. Good day.
Last slip that I have, Carl Morris. If anyone else would like to speak, please come on down.
Carl Morris, Valley District. Good afternoon. I'm here to express my concern about certain materials currently available in our public libraries, books that contain sexual explicit content and are readily accessible to our young kids. I understand the importance of protecting freedom of speech and expression. However, I also believe there's a difference between upholding constitutional rights and neglecting the moral and developmental well-being of our community's most vulnerable members. Let me ask you directly. Have you, any of you personally reviewed the books in question? Well, I have, and what I've found is deeply disturbing. If it turns my stomach, how do you think it impacts a young, impressionable, impressionable mind? I dare say, an overwhelming majority of parents in this community, if shown these books, would not purchase them for their homes, nor would they permit their kids to read them. So why are we permitting it in our public libraries? Why are taxpayers, taxpayer dollars funding material that parents would never allow under their own roofs? History and research both show that early exposure to sexually explicit content can have long-lasting effects. I, it distorts how young people perceive themselves, others, and what is acceptable behavior in relationships. I have heard claims that half the county supports heaping these books, but I question that. Many parents simply do not know what's on the shelves. If they did, I believe far more would be standing with me. To Mrs. White, I recall your words at the recent Republican Committee meeting, where you expressed concern for the spiritual well-being of our kids. I commend you for that, and I ask you to let that same concern guide you now. This is not just about policy, it's about stewardship. We believe communities are called to protect their most valuable resources, our kids. Jesus said in Luke seventeen two, "It would better be, it would be better for them to be thrown in the sea with a millstone tied around their neck than to cause one of these little ones to stumble." When harmful material is accepted, accessible to kids, we are no longer protecting innocence. We are compromising it, and we cannot be silent about that. You were elected to represent the people of this county and to lead with courage and common sense. So I'm asking you now to do the right thing. Protect our kids, remove these books. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all I have for public comments. Anyone else? Thank you very much. We will now have our board member comments, as we get started with that. Mr. Evans, would you like to come down and give us a courthouse update? I think courthouse updates may be on your everyday to-do list, right? You're giving an update to someone. Thank you.
Many visitors on that courthouse. Yep. First of all, good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. Just to start off with, I'd like to say that the courthouse project is moving along quite well. I'm quite pleased with the progress that we get each day or each week. Some of the things we're currently working on is we finished blasting along two twenty. We're currently digging the footers for the retinage wall along two twenty and backfilling as we go. We're also building the forms of the planter wall. There's the current retinage wall that you see as you drive by. There's going to be a smaller wall in front of that. It's going to be a planter wall, make the big wall look prettier. We should, we're building the, the forms of that. Should be pouring concrete next week. We're finished demoing, demoing the courthouse and the courthouse basement. Courthouse basement was quite the safety planning, because it's a basement, and you got to get on top of it to dig it out. We should probably have that done maybe about the end of this week or the beginning of next week. We also have to remove the tons and tons of courthouse debris. We, probably about another four weeks remaining of removing that, and it'll look like it's just a nice flat lot at that point in time. The new courthouse is going to have a basement as well, Sally Port interest in the back, so we got to do some digging. We are quite confident that we're going to run into nothing but rock in that back parking lot along Backstreet and Roanoke Street. I got to cut four foot off of that parking lot as well, so there's going to be some more blasting. We're just not sure how much until we get into it. So the blasting will be temporarily paused for about a month until we get all the debris and get that site cleared off. I mentioned number six here, we're already getting ready for the concrete. And that's about where we're at. And I will say that we are, we are keeping on track. We're still on schedule and moving forward.
Thank you. What, when do you feel that the demolition will be complete?
So you mean by demolition, so the courthouse itself is demoed?
It's proper, it's down, right.
It's all, and so like I said, the, the only remaining parts of the, of the courthouse that are currently there is the basement. And that, like I said, that was kind of a safety puzzle, and then to get rid of the debris, to get rid of the debris, three or four weeks, so the whole thing will take about a month. And then, like I said, it'll be a, a nice flat area there, and then we got to do some, some boring to find out just how much rock was below it, how much they dug out or they didn't dig out. Then same thing with the parking lot, and I couldn't do that before because it was an active parking lot. So I do have another update for you, if you'd like it, on the fire department, on rebound fire department extension. That should go to bid, not this Friday, but next Friday. And once again, they've all been pre-qualified bidders. Oh, I got some pictures here for you. I'm sorry.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yes, sir. This is the, this is what it looks like from the construction entrance from Main Street. As you can see, most of it's gone. That monument will get moved, probably, it'll probably be there until August. This is along two twenty here. This is the, the large retinage wall that I was talking about. There's going to be a small planter wall put in front of it, and then planters and plants on it.
A planter wall is a plant, like to plant?
So it'll be, you got a tall wall and a short wall?
Yeah.
And you got about three feet between them?
That's true.
And you plant some nice plants on there to make that wall look a whole lot better.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the, the lower, further? This is just some more demo of the basement. Like I said, that was quite the safety project there. I'm real pleased with Jimmerson Lewis and W E L for doing a fine job on that. This is where we were blasting. You see the large blasting mats. All those are being hauled off. It's now fairly flat. This is along two twenty. This is the, the, the trenching that we're doing and backfilling to be able to put the other retinage wall there, and then we'll finish cutting that to grade and level it all off. As you see that crooked telephone pole there, that will get replaced as well. It's a forty-five foot pole. I need a fifty-foot pole. So that'll clean that area up, make it look a little better in the long run as well. As long as the, as well as the different, I don't have pictures of it, the different telephone poles along Backstreet. There's four poles on that street. I'm trying to make one, one straight one.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Any other questions?
Looks like they completed the backfill that you have to redo.
Yes, sir. We did.
Look pretty clean.
And we actually did correct this time, so that's a, yeah. It is done, and it's been done well, and as we go along with that wall, we scan it, test it, and send it, make sure that it.
Thank you so much, Rich. We appreciate it. Matt, would you like to come back down the steps? We'll get Mr. Hinkle down here and give an update on the emergency communication system.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Matt Hinkle, you're Emergency Communication Systems Manager. Two major updates that we're working on right now. We're finalizing the radio count with all the different agencies. One of the things we did recognize that, that we're addressing now is the age of the subscribers or radios, portable radios that were offered by the vendor. They were getting, when they were first, the contract was first signed, they were the latest and greatest. But there is a new model out, and now they've got subsequent models for lower tiers. So we're looking to upgrade those to the newest and latest and greatest radios in anticipation that, at some point, that those radios will be, the radios that we had spec'd will be phased out. And we want to make sure that we get at least ten, twelve years out of the radios. So we're looking to upgrade those radios to the latest and greatest, excuse me, on the sites. We've been working in the Blue, so our Blue Ridge site, we're working with the landowner and the tower company. We're kind of facilitating all that. They've got the site location planned out. They're doing the surveying now. We're just now negotiating on the access road, how that's going to access that. Hopefully, that will get finalized here in the next month or so, and then they'll be submitting their plans. The landfill site is moving along well. We've got, I got the grading plan last week. So they'll be submitting their plans for building and construction and things of that nature, so that's moving along well. The Tinker Mountain and Reed Mountain RFP will be going out hopefully in the next couple of weeks, probably in the first week in June. I anticipate we'll give them thirty days to respond to that. So sometime in the middle of July, we should be getting those back, and then hopefully getting a vendor on board for those two tower sites. So those are the two major updates that has happened since the last, you know, last update that we've given. So any questions or anything?
Questions for Mr. Hinkle?
Thank you very much.
So much. Anyone else have any board member comments? Anything? Anything? Steve, would you like to have any final comments?
No, ma'am.
So I have a couple of exciting dates. Our very first Building Safety Month education event was on May nineteenth. We had over sixty people attend, getting great feedback from that. Kudos to Nicole, Mark Bowles, and the entire building team for hosting this great event. And we really appreciate our partners, CAPS Building Supply for sponsoring the event, and to the Fish and Pig, which will be opening soon in Daleville for donating food. Great to have those, those relationships. Also, we have two exciting dates for having ribbon-cutting ceremonies for our pickleball courts that we've been working on for, for several years, actually. Blue Ridge Park on Thursday, June sixth at ten thirty. We're going to have the ribbon-cutting and a short program at ten thirty in the morning, and then we will have activities all day until six. Friday, June twenty-first, at Buchanan Elementary School, we will cut the ribbon on those courts at six PM. They'll be followed by activities and a family movie night. Also, I want to remind everybody that Boko Wild is Saturday, June fourteenth. That is at the Buchanan Town Park, starting at one PM and going, I think, until seven. Our fall sports rec signups start June first. Flag football, football, cheer, and soccer, and the library's summer reading challenge is in full swing. You can find all of this on our website by subscribing to notify me, and you can also use the Get to Know Boko newsletter by signing up online. Lastly, very important for those of you who like to eat. Hopefully, that's everybody. It's late in the day. No one laughed at that joke. Our Regional Restaurant Week kicks off May thirty-first, runs through June eighth. Please follow Shop Bodatot to stay in the know. We have seventeen Bodatot restaurants participating in that event. So that's very exciting. Hope to get people out. I think Tiffany is showing us some of the cool restaurant stuff right now. So please think about this as an opportunity to introduce yourself to restaurants that you may not know about and that you love to visit, and go there and support them, because they are vital members of our community. There's Donnie D's. I think we all know what, what misfortune happened to them this week, and certainly would love to show them any support that we can. So all the restaurants are great, and we want to support them all, but a special shout out to Donnie D's to help them through this time. With no other comments from the board, I will entertain a motion. Oh, wait, I won't entertain a motion. I will recess until six PM, when we will hear three items on the agenda this evening. So I will see you all at six. We are now in recess.